Bow our heads and pray. Almighty God, our gracious heavenly father, we are grateful to you tonight for the many blessings that you pour out on us each day. We thank you for your hand of protection that is upon the city of Brawley and the Imperial Valley. We thank you for healing those that are sick. We ask that you would continue to do that, that you would keep those safe who are traveling through this weather. We thank you for everyone that's here tonight and for this opportunity to guide our city. We ask that you would give us wisdom and that you would guide our steps. I ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Lloyd Mueller, could you lead us in pledge of allegiance, please?
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the repeating justice of all.
Okay. I'm now entertaining motion for the approval of the agenda. Can you guys hear me all right? Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion. Is there a second?
Yes.
I'll second.
So a motion is second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, we now come to the part of agenda for public appearances and comments. This is the time for the public to address the council on any item not appearing on the agenda. That is when the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council that may or will recognize you and when you come to the microphone, please state your name for the record. You are not allowed to make personal attacks on individuals or make comments which are slanderous or which may invade an individual's personal privacy. Please direct questions and comments to the city council. Anyone from the public which make a comment today. Alante.
Hola buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Kimberly Rodriguez. Soy presidente de aquí de Brole por hace más de veinte años. Me gustaría que se hicieran las juntas en español, ya que muchos miembros de la comunidad necesitan estar informados de lo que está pasando. Gracias.
Yes, so just quick to translate and I'm not an official certified translator, but she
I can, I can translate for her. My name is Terry Partida. I'm her son. My mom is coming here as a representative of Lideres Campesinas. It's an organization that has a lot to do with women in leadership when we're talking about farm workers and development and something that she really wanted to express in English. Unfortunately, we don't have the translation services that a lot of our leaders, especially in the farm worker space are, you know, deserving of. So I think she wanted to say as well, as well as me, is I think we should maybe think about translating some, some of our content as well, not only on, you know, the Instagram page, but and in terms of the agenda, just so we can have an equitable environment for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? No? All right. So now we move on to item two B. Proclamation recognition of Lideres Campesinas presented by myself and the city council. City of Brawley proclamation recognition of Lideres Campesinas, whereas Lideres Campesinas is a respected organization dedicated to empowering farmworker women and youth has significantly contributed to society, to socioeconomic and political advancement of this community and whereas their mission to promote the human rights and leadership abilities of farmworker women and youth aligns with the values of City of Brawley and whereas Lideres Campesina successfully organized the annual essential workers posada in Brawley the early mornings of December eight, twenty twenty-three. And whereas this event provided a much needed platform for essential workers to gather, celebrate and be recognized for their invaluable contribution contributions, especially during challenging times. And whereas the event was marked by the participation of dozens of agencies underscoring the collaborative spirit and community support for essential workers. And whereas the event featured raffles and the provision of complimentary pancakes and eggs, adding a festive and welcoming atmosphere to the gathering. And whereas such efforts by Lideres Campesinas exemplify a deep commitment to community service and the well-being of essential workers in Brawley. Now therefore, I, Ramon Castro, mayor of City of Brawley, along with the Brawley city council members, do hereby proclaim recognition of Lideres Campesinas for their exemplary leadership in organizing the annual essential workers posada in Brawley and the city council extends its gratitude and appreciation for their dedication to the farmworker community and their ongoing efforts to ensure the recognition and support of essential workers. City of Brawley, California, witness, where if I have interest, set my hand and cause to seal the City of Brawley to this to be fixed on the sixth day of February, twenty twenty-four. Ramon Castro, mayor. All right. So, uh, thank you, council member Revolar, for bringing this forward to us and we did have a little bit of miscommunication with the organization, but we do have a member, Mrs. Rodriguez, who just came out to speak and will accept the recognition. I did offer to present it later to the organization because they don't have an actual brick and mortar of a building. They work out of homes and whatnot. So they said go ahead and accept now and we'll, so we'll do that. That's good. Well, I guess you would like to come up. See if you would. Why don't you, Terry, come up with her and see if you can translate for her and and help me out. I'm not that good at getting it, so.
Buenas tardes. Lideres Campesinas verdaderamente ha transformado mi vida de manera profunda. A pesar disculpa. Este vivo aquí en la ciudad de Brole, en el Valle Imperial, la mayor parte de mi vida. Mi participación en esta organización ha sido increíblemente reveladora. Saber que los trabajadores agrícolas enfrentan desafíos es una cosa, pero escuchar sus historias y experiencias de primera mano, especialmente de quienes forman parte de nuestra comunidad, ha sido impactante, una de la manera conmovedora. Antes de unirme a Lideres Campesinas, tenía conocimiento de las dificultades que enfrentaban los trabajadores del campo en la región, pero era algo abstracto para mí. A través de esta organización tuve el privilegio de escuchar las voces de los campesinos y campesinas. Yo soy parte de una de ellas. Muchas gracias.
So I'm just going to do a translation. I'm not a professional translator, so bear with me if there's a little slowness on my part. Um, as my mom was saying is Lideres Campesinas is really a transformative part of her life. It was a very profound and very important part of what became, you know, what an organization and leadership with, with Campesinas, you know, leaders, women in our work, in, in the fields, working hard. And she was talking about how knowing that these farmworkers have find so many challenges in their work. But, you know, the importance of learning and listening from them, from their experiences, especially forms a great part of our community. As we all know, you know, the Imperial Valley is built off of agriculture. It's built off the backs of all of these wonderful systems coming together and doing great things. And she wants to say that before she was part of Lideres Campesinas, she had some, she knew some of the difficulties, but Lideres has really shown her how we can empower women, how we can empower women in the workforce and in the farmworker sector. And, you know, how we can come together as a community and keep going.
Thank you. Any comments from council?
No, yeah, I mean, I know previously city manager Falcilla had attended the breakfast and so, uh, you know, I went and it was really great to see the community, see recognition. And so I was really proud and thank you for the council for, you know, recognizing the organization, but how we can support, please let us know. I think everyone in this council understands the mission of the organization and which I'll do so. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your hard work in this organization. Oh, sorry. Let me dive in. And I certainly echo the value and the importance of our entire community when it comes to agriculture and I really like how you phrase that, how all these, how all these really it's not just individuals that we have to recognize, but entire swaths of our community that come together that make it all happen. So also mentioned Terry and his mother, so I recognize we're part of a presentation having necessarily anything to do with this, not very long ago that I gave at the chamber, but to me, to see you guys stepping forward and being honored with this proclamation representing many out there. I think it's a great thing. So thank you to our mayor. Thank you, council member Gil, also for bringing it to light.
And just I echo the comments that were shared here with the council and we appreciate the effort that you make and the recognition that you bring the women in agriculture. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I'd also mention youth. And so that's very important for someone who picked lettuce as a young man, you know, like fourteen, thirteen, sixteen. I had the privilege of working out there and getting my boots muddy. So I understand what this means. So certainly appreciate the hard work that you guys are putting out there. So let's go ahead and present. You guys want to get some pictures and? Thank you.
Cheers.
No, man, it's It's COVID.
All right. So we'll now move on to the consent agenda. Items are approved by one motion. Council members or members of the public may request a consent items to be considered separately at any time determined by the mayor.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent as written.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Alls opposed? Motion carries five oh. I do know we have, I do see we have Dean Nunez and Frank Salazar from SDSU. Uh, we're here obviously on the, um, on item three E.
Which likes to make a comment.
Mayor Castro and city council members, it's a pleasure to be with you all again. I just want to acknowledge and thank you for supporting this MOU. It's an agreement to collaborate. And an invitation for Friday, we will look forward to meeting with you eleven o'clock at our Brawley campus. The change is coming. It's here and we're so thrilled that it's happening in Brawley. Thank you very much for hosting us.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Dean Nunez, for passing out item three F. Approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Brawley and UC University, UC University in Brawley campus. I mean, all right, we'll now move on to the city manager's report.
Uh, thank you, mayor. Just real quick, encourage the public to, uh, as we kick off this budget season starting tonight with the schedule to present to council that, uh, encourage the public to really engage with staff and get to understand the budget and both Sylvia Luna, the interim finance director, and myself, the city manager, we're here to meet with anybody. And we encourage participation so we can thoroughly understand our resources and needs. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, in regular business, when we go into that, and I'm sure you'd interrupt the city manager report, but I think he was completed. Under regular business, there's item E and F. If we could address those first, just to get them out of the way, because I know that there's other items that we need to probably spend a little bit more time on.
Yeah. Should we do that? So go ahead and do that. All right. So we'll continue then with item, uh, we'll go to regular business, item five E. And there are two separate issues. So we'll start with item five, five E presented by a discussion and potential action to approve Los Amigos de la Comunidad request to close Main Street and a portion of North and South Plaza Streets to hold the annual Caesar Chavez celebration. Secondly, approve the request by Los Amigos de la Comunidad to sell alcohol during the event presented by Tommy Garcia. So let's do this first before we move on. Let's go ahead and create this item five E. Uh, one, five, five E two, does that, is that? So we'll separate the second item, which is the approval of, uh, to sell alcohol.
Good evening, mayor and esteemed council members. Yes, as the mayor read, we have before us a request for a street closure for a city event there for the Caesar Chavez weekend to include a car show out there. This is a, it's a little more extensive, as is the next one, is the, you know, one we are getting a lot more of these requests for street closures of Main Street. But these ones also are including requesting further out to, to Sixth, which does require, you know, more manpower, setting up more barricades, as well as the consideration to the, you know, public and businesses in that area. It does affect.
So it'd be the five hundred block closed down as well. And it would be, um,
Down to Sixth Street.
Down to Sixth Street. And that is for the Los Amigos de la Comunidad request, right? Mr. Reyes?
It's an annual. Okay. Any discussion inside?
This is an ongoing event. I think it's the eighteenth annual and I've been supportive of it every year in the past and I'd like to continue to support it. So there's no other discussion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the item.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alls opposed?
That was for clarification. That was one A, correct?
E one.
E one.
E one. And then, all right, so can I get a motion for, secondly, approve the request to sell alcohol during the event?
For E two, I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alls opposed? Motion carries four one. All right. Take care of that one. All right. Let's move on to item five F. Discussion and potential action or proof project Evers request to close Main Street. A portion of North and South Plaza Streets to the North of Vegas shows presented by Thomas Garcia, assistant to a city manager.
It's very similar to the first one, another activity there on Main Street, also including a car show, I believe. And this is additionally also to Sixth Street. This one is not requesting the sale of alcohol.
Great. Is there a reason for that or is?
Will you bring, you'll be bringing your own? Is that what it is?
Bringing it's an ice chest.
It'll be moved.
How are we going to handle the actual, will it be, will it leave the premises with alcohol, what they're going to consume and?
That's correct. Their ABC license only allows for on-premises, so they don't have to get it.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alls opposed? All right.
Second.
Yes.
I don't.
Just as a point of clarification and comment, uh, these are back-to-back events for downtown and while we haven't yet got any complaints about affecting the business, other businesses that aren't of the entertainment, that's a potential. Moving forward and hopefully on the twentieth, we're going to present to council a set of procedures and policies that will take it from, from planning to end for approval. So we can get a better handle on, on the continued increasing, increase, uh, request to close downtown and effects that it has on staff.
Understood. Thank you. And Mr. Look at here some comments, you know, back many years ago, many, many years ago, probably twenty, when I was on the Main Street Committee. Part of the reason to shut down was to help promote business, right? And so it sounds like there's already some discussion to do that. So if we can help promote the fact that it's closed and bring people out and they can shop and spend money downtown, I think it'd be very valuable too. So I, I don't necessarily consider a shutdown, meaning, I mean, I know it's going to deter or, or, or make it a little bit more difficult for traffic flow, but if we can get people down there to, to see what's out there and shop a little bit, I think that would be useful.
Yeah, thank you. And I guess kind of go in that same thing. I know we talked about different locations as well and we always get the same. Nothing wrong with that, but I just was at another event recently and they use like alleys, different streets. So I think even depending on the event, but when I look at the
We've done it really well.
You know, I look at the application though, just lists, I think maybe they might be boxed in. So maybe expanding that list of facilities requests or areas requested, and maybe it's special for us to identify certain areas and certain streets and then they can be listed. So make it easier for those applying. Say, hey, my event isn't big enough to, for the whole plaza park and for the whole main street.
Mm-hmm.
This site. So they, I said, we're identifying certain areas throughout town. They're smaller, bigger, depending on the size of it. And it shows up the whole community.
We did an art event in the alley of the five hundred block years ago. And so that was a long while back, but yeah, that's.
You're talking about the actual forum, right? Yeah. We're, we're actually part of the, uh, what we're going to present is separating the use of facilities agreement versus a street closure event type thing.
Yeah, I don't think, and that's certainly something we want to see, obviously. Let's continue, right? We want to see the city kind of live. And we constantly get requests and I know that, uh, some of the criticisms sometimes that I receive is that, you know, we're not out there promoting and putting all these events and obviously we can't, we can't do all that and we expect the community to step up and do that. And so as a city, it's our job, I think, to facilitate and support these groups that come forward, obviously. And, you know, can't beat us up too bad, right? It's, it costs money. Um, but if, any way that we can work with them and that includes identifying other areas where we could host these events and much, you know, it'd be easier for the city to handle and would have the same effect on the community would be great.
It's, uh, we want to standardize the procedures and the timeline. A lot of these come in.
That as well.
The week of the council and meeting, we're trying to scramble and put everything together. And so it'll be more clear and people can look it up and start planning.
We do get complaints. If we could refer to that, George, please. Instead of this one, that'd be great. You know what I mean? We can give us your cell number. We'll post that out.
All right. There's no further discussion. We can move on to item five A, discussion and potential action.
We voted, right, on that?
We did. We sure did.
Yes, okay, good. Congratulations. Good luck. Good luck, Mr. Reyes.
Congratulations. Discussion and potential action to receive and file twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three general fund year end budget report, approve the amended budget carryovers fiscal year twenty twenty-two and twenty-three to fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. That was a tongue twister. And allocations to reserves presented by Sylvia Luna, interim finance director.
Good evening, mayor, members of the public and city staff. Sylvia Luna, interim finance director. Um, I'm here tonight to present the final numbers for our twenty-two fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget. And this report will discuss how the city perform on its revenues and, and its expenses. And what are the estimated reserves at year end and what savings that will convert into carryovers will be added to the current fiscal year budget. Uh, to provide a little bit of context and background on how we get to these numbers, final numbers. Um, as you know, everything, it's a process and year end, it's no exception. Um, the finance department in collaboration with all city departments must go through what we call the sixty-day period accrual, which runs from June thirtieth all the way to, to August thirtieth every, every year. Um, during this period, all departments make sure to get all of their invoices that are related to expenses, expenses that must be recorded during the closing fiscal year. And after this is, uh, this is done, uh, finance performs analytics, reconciliations and adjustments to each of the accounts to ensure that both revenues and expenses align to what was budgeted. So our year-end report focuses, or the one that I'm providing tonight focuses on the general fund only. Uh, for both, we're going to look at revenues, expenses, reserves, carryovers. And the reason why we do this, we do the work for all the funds, but we do this because the general fund is the mainly operating fund and that's the fund where we look at to determine how the city is performing financially. So we're going to focus just on general fund tonight. So general fund revenues for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Overall, uh, the general fund revenue uh, was twenty-one point two million for, for the year. Compared to budget, we were a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars below budget. But overall compared to prior year's numbers, we were thirteen percent higher. Um, so if we, we look at those revenues compared to budget, we can see that our tax revenue was strong. Uh, the key driver for, uh, for our tax revenue to be higher than anticipated was mainly utility users tax. Uh, utility users tax, uh, we collected three hundred and nineteen thousand more than last year. And one of the reasons behind this increase is the increase in utility costs as utilities, such as natural gas and electricity, as well as a, uh, update of our, of our utility users tax, uh, modernizing our tax. Now we're collecting, uh, this tax on telecommunications services such as Zoom um, and Boomerang, uh, which were not being collected in the past. So we did this update twenty-one, twenty-two during twenty-one, twenty-two, and now we're seeing the benefit of all that work that was done. Um, so that's on the tax side for sales and use tax and property taxes and the vehicle license fee. Pretty much our tax revenue remained flat compared to actuals. Um, so basically you would see under tax, the tax category, uh, UUT, it's, it's the main, the main driver. For permits, under permits revenue, we do see an increase compared to budget, but we don't have an increase compared to last year's actuals. In terms of construction permits and development, uh, during the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, we issued six hundred and thirty-one permits. A hundred and two are related to new building residential. Last year, new building residential was a hundred and sixty-six permits. So we're still trending up. We're, there's strong development. And, and we're still performing good on this, on this category. Uh, what you see in red, uh, and some of, one of the reasons why we didn't hit, hit our, our target and in, in revenues, it's it's mainly grants and reimbursements and recoveries. Um, in grants, we have still the SB one planning, the housing grant. Um, those revenues were collected during twenty-three, twenty-four. So were expected last year and we got them this year. Uh, we have multiple police, um, police grants related to equipment, uh, related to salaries and benefits, overtime that are, where also the expenses were incurred, but their revenues were, uh, or their financial reporting were completed during, during this fiscal year. So those are delayed revenues. The big item under, the, under the miscellaneous category that's related to CDBG funding, program income funding for the Lion Center and Pool Rehab projects. So as you know, construction began early this fiscal year. So, uh, it is expected that that revenue will be recognized during twenty-three, twenty-four. So, and basically grant revenue will be carried over to, uh, the current fiscal year. And the same revenues that were not received during, uh, this twenty-two, twenty-three equal one point five million, which should be uh, recognized during twenty-three, twenty-four. So just to comment here, our, our revenue looks strong. I, I would just like to add that those twenty-one point two million I, are being heavily supported by one-time grant funding. Uh, that's the result of the great effort from multiple departments, but especially our police department. So in terms of expenses, we did have some overages to report uh, across, uh, there are just three departments. We have graffiti abatement, a small overhead, two thousand dollars. Uh, fire station one and two, both present overages, one of them significant. Um, mainly they're related to, uh, the high demand of services is are unpredictable, right? And we also have high inflation. Uh, and we can see the effect of those on medical supplies for fuel utilities and some anticipated repairs. Uh, graffiti abatement, I believe they receive a, as a, their own assigned vehicles. So we had some unbudgeted costs for their fuel and the equipment they used. Um, and animal control, again, this is just based by demand. Uh, it's all strictly related to overtime from the animal control officer. Um, even though most of the departments, I would say ninety percent of them stay within budget. Um, there are some expanded line items uh, that did went over budget significantly, which is obviously is natural gas, electricity, our cleaning services, uh, fuel, uh, overtime was a big one. Public safety departments um, had incurred into a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in overtime. Some of it is partially being offsetted by, by grant revenue. And, um, but we have, we have, um, we have also a high increase in temporary salaries. Do you have staff shortages and, and there's, there's many, many, many more in here uh, that I would like to highlight that are not, you know, that we, we, we are showing a saving overall because there are savings related to other categories that I will explain in a moment. So budget savings and, and carryovers. So, uh, what you're seeing on screen right now, it's all the departments and their net savings for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, most of these savings relate to staffing. So I, I will talk a little bit about, more about what these savings are. Uh, but, but so far, um, the total savings for, under the general fund budget were three, three million. Um, from those three million, only one point eight are being considered uh, as savings that will be added to this fiscal year budget because they're very specific to projects, studies uh, and that type of, of, of project. So with this type of, uh, the revenue, the level of revenues that we have and the expenses that we have during twenty-two, twenty-three, we have a surplus of two point seven million for twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, I know this looks like great, great news. Uh, I don't want to be, I don't want to sound negative, just want to be realistic. Uh, that's why I Uh, that's why I added this lighting here, which for what I call the reality check scenario. And um, uh, if we look at the, at the details of those savings, half a million of those two, two point seven or the three million dollar savings that I was talking about, half a million are related to salaries and benefits. Uh, one po- one point one, it's operating expenses. And what you see in blue, that one point four is related to capital improvement projects that are sitting in the general fund. And most importantly, that's our pool and roof projects in there and some other equipment that we have there. Yes, so my reality check scenario includes what will be our expen- our expense level if we would have completed those capital improvement projects? And um, and those uh, will be fully staffed. Uh, as of June thirtieth, we had twelve vacancies on the, on the general fund departments, uh, which is also ha- um, adding to that surplus. Uh, but right now we have a two point seven. If we will be fully staffed and we have had completed those projects, the surplus will be a hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Which is still good.
It's still good, but I just wanna clarify that uh, with staffing levels also comes other direct and indirect expenses that we will be seeing in there, like training, completing those studies, those analysis. And we, we have definitely probably be around six thousand, six hundred thousand or less on, on that surplus, which is still good.
Considering the big whammy of inflation.
Yes.
That's uh, it's, so he was like, if it, it's eight hundred and then if we had the other ten, six hundred, and then if we had then inflation.
As if we weren't confusing.
Adding, I'm sorry. Yes, I mean, I, I, I guess the point is, uh, yes, we do have that surplus. Uh, it's, it's gonna look wonderful in our reserves, we have those savings. Uh, but I think we need to be cautious and mo- and, you know, and plan and plan on how we're gonna use those funds and, or can, how can potentially be, be, we can be using those, those, those funds. So this is how our general fund reserves look. Um, so uh, middle column over there, you have your two point seven million dollar surplus. Our um, our unassigned, which is what we call the, the, the general fund reserve that we can use for anything that we need, excluding other uh, committed funds for like uh, the capital uh, replacement plan and the safety reserve. Um, it started on three million, that was at the end of twenty-twenty-two, so we still have a two point four. Um, adding to that reserve, so our final balance is five point five. So uh, based on our fifty percent expense policy that that target that we have, we have a surplus of two point six. So reserves are loo- looking great, they're looking good. Um, obviously next year, uh, as we plan for the next fiscal year, we, there's, there's inflation, there's all these things that going on. Many projects will be completed, so we're anticipating that probably that surplus, it's not gonna be that wonderful.
Let's hope it is.
So um, so far, uh, this is my last slide, not sure if there's any questions that we want me to answer.
Sylvia, just, I think you've had it in here, but just for simplicity, if you were to sort of back away the one-time grant funding, like you said. Um, really, it, it, it still looks to me like revenues and expenditures are matching up. What would that budget, general fund budget be about? I know in the, you know, that is about eighteen million or? Do you have, I, I know you, you don't wanna state anyone in finance something that's around, rounded, but um, is there a sense that we can get just? If you back away that, you know, what are we looking at as far as general fund?
So if we, if you're asking if we remove that grant funding from the question? Um, well, that will be that right there, it's just one point three million. Yes, it will be.
It was about four.
Yes, twenty-one point two minus one point three.
Yeah.
Yeah, it will be pretty, let me go, let me look back to this one. So we, we're pretty close, we will be pretty close uh, to our expenses level. I mean, again, that surplus, uh, that, that deficit, that surplus over there will be gone. Uh, and the other thing that we need to remember is that it takes a lot of effort from departments to apply for those grants. Some of them are one-time funding, uh, some of them are two or three years programs. But again, uh, those grants are starting to look uh, more like competitive grants and not grants that we can just apply and get because of population or other characteristics. So they're getting um, harder and harder to get.
Much more difficult.
It's much more difficult, yes. So that's why um, I, I would, that I pointed out, right? That uh, those revenues look, they're looking good, but they're not permanent, they're not staying with us. We need to fight for those and uh, we probably need to look for more permanent uh, revenue sources.
Uh, Sylvia, real quick, when you mentioned the changes in the UUT, I just wanna point out, or maybe you can expand a little more on the changes that were made when we voted on that measure in twenty-twenty-two? And how that improved uh, the revenue that came in?
Sure, so for the UUT, main changes were, number one, we removed the sunset on, on that UUT. I believe that before every three or five years, five, five years, we had to.
Voters with fifty thousand.
Yes, and, and go through all the expenses of the election and, and studies, et cetera. That's one of the changes. The second changes that is actually improving this collection, it's uh, expanding on where we cha- and what we charge that tax. Uh, so it got modernized, now includes uh, Zoom, Netflix, other, yeah, streamlined services. And that's where we're seeing that um, additional.
For uh, a couple of things to note is, is a lot of that isn't dr- uh, driven by the inflation. That's the biggest, on both that and our sales tax due to the high fuel costs.
Yep.
So uh, while we benefited with higher sales tax revenue, we're already seeing for this next year that with the dri- dip in fuel prices and some stabilization of the, of the utility that uh, we're, we're neck and neck with the budget. So it's, I mean.
Yeah.
It's the other side of the inflation.
Yes, there's a good and bad.
Not so hidden cost, obviously, it's just the, the, the con- back to, you know, pension obligations and, and that. Steeply rising costs that we always talk about, but it, it's, it's a reality.
I wasn't gonna bring that up, but since you did, um, this, we, we anticipate both in this next budget, a huge increase in our unfunded pension liability due to the, the.
Negative returns.
Neg- negative returns, I was gonna say something else, sorry, thank you. Uh, uh, negative returns from CalPERS investments and, and also uh, I anticipate uh, insurance, as you can see throughout the state. Uh, you know, homeowners getting counsel left and right, uh, a huge increase in those two that are, uh, we don't have a lot of say in how we control those costs.
Can we even call them CalPERS investments?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's that CalPERS money pit.
That's why they call them dumb.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so uh, once we, um, we're hoping we, we're beginning our twenty-four, twenty-five budget season and we're gonna kick off uh, uh, this year with the long-range planning presentation. That's a ten, ten-year projection of the, how the general fund looks like, revenues and expenses. And um, I don't wanna say anything yet, right, we, I just wanna wait for that presentation and, and we're gonna discuss all these elements that are coming our way and how potentially can we use uh, the savings we have been building for the past three, four years to prepare for those unplanned scenarios. So that's, that's the goal for, for our next uh, presentation. And kick off of the budget season. So uh, I just would like to thank you, thank you all city employees, city staff, council members, city manager, our residents and business owners. Uh, this is your budget and um, hopefully twenty-four, twenty-five will be even better and will reflect uh, the true necessities uh, of the community. And um, well, thank you.
I, I would just echo that uh, all the departments are uh, fully engaged in their budgets and that has helped immensely. That's been a, a change over the last few years where uh, there's uh, everybody's involved in the budget process and understands and helps. So I just wanna thank, thank everybody for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we do recall and uh, Tyler had to make uh, I remember all the, the changes that happened over the last several years to make sure that, that every department was working with the, with the city manager to save money. Uh, any comments on this item?
An action item, right?
Action, doesn't need a, yeah.
Doesn't need, okay, gotcha. All right, nothing further. Uh, are we all good, Sylvia?
Okay, thank you, thank you so much for your time.
Oh, you need to clarify, yeah, go ahead.
Eric raised eleven thirty-five, a point, a couple of things. One, you're balancing it, right? It's not, we're still not getting ahead as a, as a city and we're not looking at other options that we need to look. One, um, you have not, when's the next, when's the next time you're gonna look at impact fees for developers? There's no way you can continue at the rate that is going now and have building in the future and then not be backlogged with our police, our fire, our sewer system, they're all gonna be impacted. So that, I hope. I hope that, that is taken into consideration quickly. Inflation has eaten away at everything, as you said. Um, I was on the planning commission, the last time uh, there was an impact fee analysis, I believe, and the, the council did pass phase one only. We had three different phases that was gonna bring it in over a six-year period, I believe, or a seven-year period, but only passed phase one. That was about fifteen years ago, so I don't know if they have had any since then, so obviously we're way behind. And I'm gonna tell you the reason why. Um, City of Imperial and its uh, feverish pitch to get houses lowered their impact fee also. And what happened was that they had overgrowth and had impacts so long, they did a regressive tax on people to recuperate what they should have got from the developers who made millions and left the town in debt. And if you go to City of Imperial now, you'll see how much they pay for water and sewer, it's, it's incredible compared to Brawley, right? We don't wanna have that same situation here. We're gonna have future growth without a doubt with lithium development. Um, Brawley will, will have an impact and also you're gonna need housing, but we do need to track businesses out as well. I hope the city develops, I know, George, we had talked about a business incentive development program and I'm, I'm hoping the city will work on that. Let's get an incentive to bring businesses here, uh, not wait for them to knock on our doorstep, but let's, let's entice them with opportunities that we can make up. And um, and yes, I did publicly, you know, I have supported utility tags. And the, the reason why is the most vulnerable will be the people who get the less services at the end if we don't have it. But in the future, we need to find a way to replace that in some way. And I believe it allows us to bring it back one day, right? If the city is in good finances, if the wording is correct. Thank you.
Thank you, all right. Any other comments from the public? No, all right. I turn a vote on item five A.
We'll make a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion, uh, we have a first, uh, motion and a second to uh, for item five A, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, aye, motion carries, five oh. Now move on to item five B, discussion and potential action to approve the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five operating and capital improvement program budget timeline presented by Sylvia Luna, interim, interim finance director.
Good evening, mayor, members of the public, city staff, Sylvia Luna interim finance director. Uh, continuing with the budget conversation, it's that time of the year again. We have officially started budget season. Um, departments are already working on their budgets, they have their um, actuals up to January of twenty-three, twenty-four and uh, prior years' information so they can start preparing and building those numbers. Um, so this is the formal invitation to the public. This is a moment where they uh, we invite them to attend the council meetings, reach out to council members, city manager and staff to make sure we, we are uh, including in this budget all, all of, of those requests, all of those parks improvements, all of, that are much needed, all those programs that uh, are highly, are being highly requested. Um, this is, this is the formal invitation. Um, so in regards to the budget format, um, we're proposing to continue to the, to continue the old format. Uh, we're gonna still have a dedicated budget website. Uh, public meetings will be available online and during and after meetings, uh, that's on our Facebook page and they're also on the city's website. Um, again, all publics are planned or scheduled to, to happen during regular council meetings uh, over here in council chambers starting six P M. So how the twenty-four, twenty-five budget timeline looks like? We have scheduled a total of, this is the creative version, but the agenda includes the, the normal, the normal schedule. Uh, that's attachment one, but our budget timeline now includes six sessions. Um, starting uh, February twenty, twentieth with the general fund tenure projection, which is the long-range planning. Uh, March nineteen, we'll be talking about the capital improvement program, that will be the budget overview and also a moment where we can uh, receive input from council and the public in regards to all those street improvements, parks improvements, facility improvements. Um, budget study session one, two and three, those are more in detail related to general fund and inter- internal service funds. We're breaking, breaking them down, it is a lot of information, it is a lot of numbers and, and every fund has its very unique situation going on. So that's why we break, break up those in, in three sessions. Um, budget study session two will be enterprise and special funds. And budget study session three, uh, will go over the changes. There is multiple versions of the budget, uh, sometimes even four or five, so in this study session will be more like this is kind of the preliminary final numbers. And finally, June eighteen, that will be uh, the presentation on where we officially and formally adopt our budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, I'm not sure if they have any questions or suggestions, you would like to change the format of the meetings, the, the document, et cetera. Any feedback?
I think it works.
What's uh, I guess what's uh? Didn't we have workshops like at the senior center for this?
We, usually we, we take the time from the regular council meetings as a, there are study sessions and there are intended, intended to be workshops where we can receive input from uh, from our residents. It can be via uh, email or public comment. Um, Tyler, where you?
I think what council member regulars referring to was that it was a year ago, June, when we did a uh, a, a workshop invited the public about explaining all us, our services and potential funding sources, permanent funding sources that they would consider. Uh, that's, and that was uh, a good, a good uh, thing for the staff to go through, but uh, I mean, that's, this, again, this is your budget timelines. We're open to whatever suggestions or direction that you wanna give.
I think if we invite those groups, I think would be really important. We do have the technology here now, especially with the newer screens and the technology that we use, just to make it easier for everybody to see. And then we have the Zoom capability here, that kind of thing. So I, I, I do appreciate the fact that we probably need to get out to, to visit these groups to make sure that they attend, that would be important, so.
And I would reiterate, both Sylvia and I are here for individual discussions of, if people are wondering how things are funded and uh, and, and where that all comes from, come on in and, and we'll definitely do the one-on-ones. And, but sure, yeah, I think it's important that we engage as much public as possible.
Yeah, and the audience can, and the folks at home can always watch the meetings and then always send in their emails with suggestions, right? I mean, it doesn't have to be where they come here and interact with us, but they could always engage you guys outside and in between the meetings where any, anything they might wanna see on the budget or any changes.
But I think inviting them at different, senior center, for example, like just so they know it's available.
That was actually a really good event, I think, uh, you know, if staff has the time to coordinate something like that, it might be a good idea before we start the process.
Okay.
All right, uh, so we just need to require, so in, further discussion on item five B? If not, I'll entertain a motion and a second.
I'm going to make a motion to accept the timeline as presented for the budget.
Second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all is in favor, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.
All is opposed, un, motion carries five oh. All right, out of, item five C, discussion and potential revised draft ordinance designed to address concerns about noise, issues and city limits, presented by Willie Sperden, city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, uh, after lots of uh, study, we have put together a draft uh, ordinance. The uh, it's, it's modeled after the city of El Centro's. Most of it's pretty cut and dry. I think where there's gonna be a lot of discussion, a lot of give and take is section um, eighteen-four, table two, is we, in the ordinance, we, we carved out the downtown specific plan area. This, that's where, that's where the entertainment is, that's where the music venues are, are, are and seem to be going. And um, that's where the concern has been. So these, the, the numbers uh, le- sound levels inserted in that table were inserted by me as based on what we saw, what we heard, but they're there for discussion. Uh, I'm not by any means a sound engineer, so we wanna take a look at that and, and, and see what council thinks about it.
And uh, what section? I'm sorry, what section was that again? Eighteen?
It's um.
Table two.
I'm on eighteen point four.
Eighteen point four, gotcha.
Eighteen point four, got you.
Yeah, page twenty.
Got you, thank you, sorry about that.
Sixty-one, I'm on.
Um, so.
Oh, you're right, sixty-one.
Yeah.
On on uh, page sixty-one of the the agenda packet. I believe, yeah, uh, we have a, as a little bit of refresher, we have just a couple of slides and and I wanted to take the opportunity to show what an IT wizard I am. Look at this, oh, boy, yeah.
Pretty good, can you do it again?
Yeah, let me see. Hey, there we go. So thank you, Amando, for the quick training. Um, so as as a reference, here's the OSHA. Uh, typical sound levels, from zero to one forty as a reference. Uh, no, I shut my mouth off and I can't make it work. There we go. Uh, as as a, as a refresher here, this is where uh. I think it was Sergeant Garcia, correct, and his uh, his officers went and took readings. Multiple times throughout the uh, different locations. And again, uh, this, when we talk about downtown, this is the area we're talking about. Color-coded by what type of business or makes use or residence it is, so. We can go back and forth here if anybody needs to take a look at it, but that was just a quick refresher, but as Bill said, uh, we are looking for uh. Uh, some direction on the levels to put in here or any other modifications as you see fit, and then we would. Uh, if council directs, bring it back for a first reading next meeting.
The the other thing I think I should point out is we uh, we we split uh, table two into uh, different days of the week. And different, more than, yeah, into three times and three sections of the day. Where the rest, the rest, noise ordinances are, you know, evening and and daytime. Uh, but this is um, a little bit different area, so we we took the time to split it up and. But we're, you know, we're looking for input on that too, from council.
All right, so you wanna start? Um, maybe perhaps we can break it down and um, days of the week, times of the day. And then we can make our suggestions.
So we broke the days, the weekend to uh, two, two sections, Sunday through Thursday and Friday and Saturday. The. The first part, first section, Sunday through Thursday, we'd have seven A M. to ten P M. That you. That noise can't exceed ninety decibels, uh, nine nineties below what the average nightclub. Uh, with music is at, but on, not a heck of a lot lower. From ten P M. to twelve A M. It would, what we put in there is eighty-five, it would drop to eighty-five, and then after. Twelve, mid twelve A M., it has, uh, the the max level would be sixty-five decibels. Weekend, Friday, Saturday nights, uh, the the time is a little bit different, seven A M. to eleven P M. And the proposed decibel levels would be ninety-five up until eleven, and then go to. Eighty-five, sixty-five, from eleven P M. to one A M., one A M. to seven A M., sixty-five. So that's, that's where, that's where we landed, but uh, like I said, I'm not elected to the city council, so you all tell me what to do.
Anyone have any suggestions? I mean, I I got a few, I'd like to hear council first. So we did, uh, I know that I was at a few of these places, we did some of the readings and uh, I mean, when you look at, right? Construction site, boiler room, uh, which I'm about depending which construction site, you know, work them all the time. Um, it it's pretty loud, and I I just think that, you know, perhaps Sunday through Sunday. Sunday through Thursday, when hours are ten, we can actually lower down all those sections um, from seven A M. to twelve A M. From, I would like to see it actually, but just at least a section that's eighty-five from ten P M. to twelve A M. Actually, come bring that one down to seventy-five.
Ten P M. to twelve A M.?
Yes, and so we could actually do that from eight P M. to twelve, uh, twelve A M. It's a, it's loud enough, depending on where you take the measurement. Um, and it's still music, you know, it's still enjoyable. You know, without having to, you know, blow off the windows.
Yeah, the other thing, the ordinance specifies that the uh, measurements are to be taken at the sidewalk. Or the street outside of the establishment that's making the noise.
Correct.
So that's pretty close.
Yeah, this is four feet, right? We can modify that. And then Friday and Saturday, of course, I mean, those are the days when these businesses make their money and uh, most of the time are. You know, have something going on. And again, we said we wanna promote activity downtown. We also wanna make sure that, you know, our residents are comfortable. Um, and I I feel good with those numbers. I don't know if anyone has any suggestions for bringing them up down. Have you guys been there? Have you do these readings?
I think, um.
Just making sure we're getting the information correct, but.
It gives a lot with, I mean, I know that.
Yeah.
So, so let me, let me make sure I have it right, Mister Castro. So you wanna, Sunday through Thursday, we wanna make it seven A M. to eight P M. And what was the?
Here's about one is eighty, eighty-five?
Eighty-five.
Ninety to eighty-five, and from ten to twelve, make seventy-five, from eighty-five to seventy-five.
So you wanna adjust the ti- the time of day too from?
Yes.
Yeah, so then it would be from eight P M. to twelve A M. So, yeah, okay.
How does that align with the level of the data? This is important to consider, because if you're using a number and it's just not. There's the range.
Yeah. I think so, we're still be, I think that's still fair, but it does like, so they don't get up to ninety-two, the nineties and. I think that that's when we had issues with folks, you know, calling in complaining.
Mister Mayor, I I also, I I brought the um, just copies of the previous studies as well to have a little bit more detail as to the time as well. And where these average deep uh, decibel levels are, so at least um, I I certainly would support what, what what will work, right? Um, and looking at these averages at the time, some of these readings are taking, they're right about the ten thirty hour, so it would fall in that. Louder time category, um, is what I'm seeing. Um, and certainly, I think as it graduates down, we wouldn't be supporting something louder, right? It gets, it gets less from there, so um, it 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 seems con- consistent with. Um, with what is occurring, or at least what the study has revealed. And I'm kinda like everybody else, I think we're all in the same boat, is um, some of the current concerns I remember hearing from the public and. Our 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 members of the public that are here, uh, that are directly involved in some of, some of the uh, impacted areas. Um, even suggested, we 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 don't know at the end of the day, right? Who's controlling the dial, so. Going off of these average readings, I think this is um, this is gonna work, or it should work. The difference is, we didn't have this, right? And I think that's what the big push was, so I'm I'm wide open to suggestion, but it it appears to me. This should work for both our um, our downtown business that that is there and um, as well as the residents.
Yeah.
Um, if we're gonna base it on the averages that have been taken and the best information that we have, so, you know, again, um, not easy.
Correct. The ordinance, I'm sorry, the ordinance does, does ha- contain a a process to obtain a permit to exceed it. I I recall, there was a concert during cattle call. On the plateau.
Five, six years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the, and the only reason I'm bringing that up is because we're looking at averages, right? So, and how are we gonna determine the readings? I'm sure you're gonna go through that, right? How they're gonna break it down and get an average of, you know, the sound level. Uh, but we look at um, if we look at. For example, if we're looking at ninety and if they're reading eighty-five, eighty-five, and then they're able to exceed it to, yeah, ninety-seven. And they still average ninety, they're still well within the scope. I just wanna make sure that we're able to cap it and they don't exceed those. That's my only concern, just wanna make sure.
So what, what, what are your thoughts about the Friday and Saturday levels?
We do have the readings. We've heard all the comments from the folks uh, who live within the vicinity. Um, yeah, again, um, I'm actually comfortable with those levels being that it's Friday and Saturday. And there's a lot of activity and there's been a lot of activity downtown, and I would hate to hamper that, and perhaps we could always review this and uh. Revisit this again later if we can't control it, but I think that those are good. I would just wanted to make sure that we, at least for the most of the week, were able to control those. Those loud, uh, the sound levels, that they don't exceed, they get too loud, louder than a boiler room or a freight train.
Mister Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Respect the implementation of whatever we approve, how will they be enforced?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure we're gonna get to that section. We'll, we'll get to, we'll, we'll allow, we'll allow for that here shortly. Um, give, give us a second, we'll, we'll call, I'll, I'll, I'll open it up for comments right now.
We, we, we're gonna use the calibrated readings like readers like we have with police, and it's mostly we're gonna fall on. If an uh, future item here on this agenda, the code enforcement officer gets approved, and police is gonna be a joint effort. Uh, with those readings to uh, what, based on a complaint to.
Yeah.
The the ordinance does contain some pretty hefty administrative fines for violation. Okay.
Thank you. All right, and and I, I also, I'll make the comment, I think it's also important, I know we're here focused with the downtown specific plan, but um. And I do appreciate our city attorney going, I I think to the detail, it's a pretty robust. Um, um, draft of of an ordinance, uh, I think versus, as it's been brought up in the past, of what we've been operating off of, so. Um, including the the definitions and not, and and also bearing in mind, this is citywide as well, so it does address. And still continue to codify our, um, all of our, you know, areas, residential areas, commercial areas, industrial areas, so. Um, with that in mind, I think some of the application or consequences of of being in in conflict with this uh. Potential ordinance um, applies to the entire city, not just the downtown specific.
On that, no, Mister Wharton, you know, we, of course, we work with the police department on this, and they they let us know, they get us, they get a uh. A significant amount of complaints, especially multi-family, you know, my neighbor upstairs too loud, this and that, so we we work to address that. As well, and and again, we didn't invent anything here, we model it after existing ordinances.
Yep. Um, on this one, though, I do, I do have, I think we discussed it a little further, uh, the residential area specifically on the weekends. A lot of us have, we do that, that's normal, it's part of our culture here. You know, we have celebrations in our backyards, we have bands, we have whatnot. And uh, you know, that's the way it is. Uh, and I would hate to just shut down the entire town for folks. Not everyone wants to go to a club or a venue or, you know, go pay fifteen dollars for a beer. Like to have family over and host and whatnot, and and we, we, we like to have fun. And so I think that this is way, this is kinda like, I think a retirement facility here at this point. And so I would like to see, um, I would like us to review these numbers for maximum sound in residential areas, at least on the weekends. And I'm not sure what the numbers are, but I think, I do think that we need to bring them up.
Yeah, maybe for residential weekends, the penalties could be um, different. Maybe the initial one are more verbal or at least codified, because violation of fractions, these are gonna apply across the board, residential and. So maybe a separate violent violations and fractions for uh, the residential neighborhood, at the very least. You know, warning for the first time or second time, or maybe within a timeframe, because you know what, people having parties every weekend. I think that could become a nuisance as well, so um, maybe that's even something separate we look into, but no, I agree, I mean, you know.
And and I I would say that that uh, the police officers, uh, their goal is not to.
Yeah.
Raise, and they do give warnings, and what 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 happens now, our biggest, I know this has been a big issue, but we get constant. Constant complaints about residential areas every week. Uh, and what happens is, uh, the officers go, all right, thank you, they turn around, soon as they drive off, they turn it back up. So there has to be consequences from staff perspective. Sure, we give warnings, right, chief, and you know, but if there's, if there's no uh, meat to the. To the sauce there.
I get you.
Yeah, that would be staff's recommendation, yeah. But I mean, increasing the limits and that stuff, that's all we're, we're open to, yeah.
But I do think that, um, and I'm sorry, we're, uh, councilor regular, where'd you see this? Uh, I would like that to be put in there, warnings should be the first start. And I'd like it to be codified.
And you wanted to break the table one into.
Yes, sir.
Weekends as well.
I mean.
Do you have a uh, an idea on what limit you think?
I mean, you're looking at classroom chatter, I mean, we don't need to have a concert in the backyard. Um, but at least up to, I would say ten P M. on weekends. Um, yeah, much like, much higher than fifty-five urban residents, I mean, would, it just, it happens, and in my neighborhood, uh, I live here. North Park, I mean, it's, there's a a party on every block, every weekend, different homes. People do that, they have their, you know, baptisms, quinceañeras or whatnot, not everyone can afford it, you know, to have it somewhere else, and they have it in their backyards. And they have some good, fun, safe parties. Uh, sometimes, like anything else in this world, things get out of hand, but typically, they're just, they're just a party, you know? Friends and family, uh, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna shut that down. Uh, trust, I mean, it's, I don't wanna do that.
All right, another question I have, are you, uh, would you cut it off at Sunday night or Saturday night?
So like Saturday.
So Friday, Saturday, Sunday, one level?
Friday, Saturday.
Friday, Saturday.
Friday, Saturday, of course, Sunday can be, that can be done during the day, and people get, get back to work. But yeah, that's, that would be my suggestion. Um, I mean, we, we killed the backyard party in Brawley, that's, yeah.
We don't wanna do that.
No, we don't.
The limit was seventy, you said?
Yeah, yeah, I would say seventy.
What about uh, the time, is it ten P M. too early?
Yeah, we go to, yeah, I'd just say we go to midnight. I mean, we'd gotta have a discussion now, and I know that it's, it's. It's not something that people want, but we, I think we need to have that discussion, and now, why do we bring it back? We're not gonna need to bring it back six months from now, a year from now. We, took us a year to get to this point, let's discuss it and and do it right. So. All right, um, I think, uh, I guess we can open it up for comments from the public. Get this part over with. I have, I have one of those.
My name's Liz Machado. Um, I'm the property owner of Ciudad Plaza, as well as Day Out across the street at six one six. I do appreciate all the time, I know that everybody's put into this, not only the council members, but obviously, a lot of the participants and the residents. Uh, that live at the Ciudad Plaza. I did review uh, your document, Mister Sperden. And I reviewed the national average also. I reviewed a number of noise ordinances in cities across California. And nowhere did I see anything that even came close to that schedule two. The only two cities that I identified that had a downtown um, area, like we're proposing to do, was. Oceanside, California, and Vista, California. And on the weekends, so in the height of all of it. They don't allow anything over sixty-five, but Monday through Thursday, it's fifty-five. After ten o'clock at night. So when we come back with the number that starts at ninety-five, I feel like we're miles apart. Um, I think that as elected officials, you're charged with protecting our safety. People in buildings of ninety-five decimal levels, it's not safe. You need to do better than that, you need to come back with something that's better. I know that a lot of this document is, in fact, um. National standard material, it is copied from other cities um, across America. Um, with the exception of that one table, it's like you're making an exception to allow this huge noise corridor. In the downtown of Brawley. So when I looked up all of these information, I know so much more about noise than I ever hoped to know in my whole life. A plane landing at LAX is ninety-five decimals, to give you an idea, so you're talking about basically allowing the same level of noise. Is planes landing on Main Street. The World Health Organization says that anything over ninety-one causes health um, ear and, you know, hearing loss. And permanent health risk, ninety-one, we're supposed to wear earplugs and muffs. So are you suggesting that everyone that's around gonna be wearing earplugs and muffs? That doesn't seem fair or right.
Good idea, and I don't wanna, because you, you'll have all the time to keep going. Liz, I just wanna correct one thing, though, I I think the mayor already suggested a reduction. This was a jumping off point, so I wanna make that clear.
No, no, I get that.
So yeah, nothing's codified yet.
Right, but. Right, but seventy still, you're talking about seventy until one o'clock in the morning. Disneyland, so I even know the noise at Disneyland is ninety-seven. That's what the amusement park rides with the horns blowing at Disneyland are ninety-seven. So we're talking about even being open to the possibility that that's what Main Street looks like and sounds like. Like I want Main Street to have activities, I mean, I live here actually full-time, so I want things to do. But not at the expense of, A, my business, B, the people that live in those apartments. I have units, I'm planning them in the development stage across the street, well, that sort of puts the brakes on that. Um, I think that we need to do a lot more than come back with ninety and even seventy, honestly.
I mean, I think it's difficult too to compare Brawley to Oceanside, you have thousands of people, hundreds of people out on the street. And so the ambient noise is different too. And so those are the things, just let me finish my comment, that's different to gauge, it really is. So it's, the challenge for council is seeing where we can make that work, right? And so we have heard from the public, we have had, you know, uh, our officers go out there, so it is a difficult decision. But I, I don't think it's gonna be an easy comparison saying you're, you know, Vista's this way, Oceanside's this way, Brawley's this way. We, we don't have, um, thousands of people out on the street like you would in those areas, right? Maybe not Vista, but certainly Oceanside, cause I've been there many times. And so, um, it's just different, right? Even if nobody was playing music, take that for example, if nobody was playing music, but you had fifteen thou-, uh, fifteen thousand people, ten thousand people out there, it's gonna be loud, right? So how do you control that? And, and what, what is that? We have a freight train that passes every single day multiple times and that is blowing, I'm sure, way louder than what that freight train is, cause that's not blowing a horn. So it's those things that we have to consider too. But I, I, I don't think that, you know, I know that the mayor is, is, is made an effort to try to reduce that amount. I think this is a really good starting point, I don't know if we're gonna get to the answer that you're needing, uh, tonight or anybody's needing tonight, but we are certainly gonna be making an effort to do that. I just don't think it's fair to compare Oceanside to Brawley, cause it's just not it.
No, I just was looking for examples of downtown areas. But if I was to take your argument, then Oceanside should be louder than Brawley, not the other way around.
But we don't know what they're measuring, we don't know what they're measuring, that's the thing. If, if, that's, you see what I'm saying, we're, we're comparing two completely different things, that's why I never try to compare Brawley to anything. Because quite frankly, it's just different. We are, the, the conversation, even though the group that started the, the conversation, it wasn't directed at eight oh five, but it's always been about eight oh five. It hasn't been about any other business, even Inferno, that conversation really hasn't come up, it's been about eight oh five. So really, i- it's just limiting the noise in that location, that's what we're after. I mean, I think we all have to admit that that's what we have been discussing for the past year. It hasn't been Inferno, because when has that really come up? It's been eight oh five, we're not talking about downtown events, we're not talking about anything else. So I think if we can work on trying to reduce, you know, I know we've gone around many a times, but if we can work on trying to reduce the, the noise level from that location, I think that's where we're gonna be best suited.
If I, if I could just furthermore just add to, to those comments, it, it's also, I heard and, and took diligent note of the comments over the year that's been made. Um, by, by this snore group, meaning we are listening, how do we make this work? And what I, what I saw was we're containing, these hours are relevant and pretty important on the table. Um, cause before, the chief complaint was just Wednesdays, Thursdays, days during the week, you know, almost like it's a six, seven day a week. This is, this contains that, much, much more, we gotta, we gotta agree on the decibel level. I, I'm, I'm, you know, we touched that and I think the mayor's already even came out of the gate addressing it, none of us have been able to even comment on it yet, all right? So I just wanna make again that clear, this is a quantum leap forward in the discussion by getting this on paper, so.
No, and we appreciate that, I mean, we recognize it's taken a year to get here, so we know that it's been a lot of work on your part, as it has been on the elderly folks that have been coming down here. They could actually dictate, I'm sure, all the county or city business back to you probably. But, um, I, I do think that we need to take a much deeper look and it's not just about eight oh five. I mean, they are, it, I think it's the way that the building is, the noise does happen to be coming from them. But that won't be the case forever, there will be other businesses that open, people have a right to have quiet enjoyment in their own homes.
There's, there's no doubt, that's why we're here, absolutely, you know, well.
So I look forward to seeing round two.
Yeah, the, 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 the other thing I'd like to point out for the public as well as you, Ms. Machado, on behalf of the whole, um, all the residents of, of the plaza is that. Um, we learned a lot of things from these different studies, we didn't just go one time, it was taken several times with averages. Um, all within the downtown specific plan areas and we, we realize there are continuous impacts, one of which was brought up, the train for example, but the ag. Um, we talked about agriculture at the top of the meeting, just the ag traffic, it is seasonal and there's times of the year, it's much higher. And they remarkably drive these numbers up as well. So a- again, not, you know, trying to have a holistic discussion here, let's start somewhere, I think that's where we're at. Let's see if we can get, we can make it to the first draft, you know, that, um, we get an ordinance on here. And, um, I think as the mayor articulated, um, none of this is, you know, this, this has brought us to this point and I think we can get to somewhere where all parties. Um, can get comfortable and agree that we have something codified.
Certainly hoping that also.
Yeah, absolutely, so I think, uh. I'm sorry.
Maybe the other side.
Yeah, and, and it'd be good if we could get the, the other side to come back and give their, their opinion, we wanna hear their comments.
No?
No? No?
Not here.
No one here? Go ahead, man, come up. I missed you last, uh, last meeting, I showed up, where was she?
To the mayor, the city council, city manager and the attorney. Um, I've been coming to the city council meeting regarding this issue, it's one year and two months this month. Um, I feel like I'm a pro temp councilwoman now, because I'm attending all of these meetings. Um, I, I, I let out the, um, ordinance that you provided and I'm satisfied with the residential decimal reading. Thank you very much for that. The table two is just what I'm concerned about. And that's, um, the noise, uh, decimals for seven A M. to ten P M. ninety. Ten P M. to twelve P M. eighty-five and twelve A M. to seven A M. Sixty-five and seven A M. to eleven A M. ninety-five. Eleven P M. to one P M. eighty-five, I'm concerned about that. Um, sounds, loud sounds are dangerous to a person's hearing. And I'm elderly and I'm losing my hearing as it is by being elderly. And with the noise, it also creates a problem also. I have a, I have a decimal reading here, it says sound below this line is considered safe. Sounds above this line is considered harmful. Seventy D B is a vacuum cleaner, washing machine, average not quiet dishwasher, average maximum television. Sixty decimals is a normal conversation, air conditioner unit, background music. Fifty D B is a certified quiet dishwasher, moderate rainfall. Forty D B is a quiet library, average room noise. Okay, the one forty decimals is a aircraft, carrier deck, fireworks. Custom car, stereo system, gunshot, shotgun. One thirty D B is a jet taking off, which Liz explained that, is a jackhammer. The loudest music. One twenty decimals is a steel mill, a car horn, emergency vehicle siren. One ten decimals is a concert, sporting event, maximum output of Apple iPad. And one hundred D Bs is a dog barking. So that gives you an idea of what the decimals are, thank you very much.
And that's the reason I make those suggestions is because it could be, you know, temporary, it could be for thirty minutes, fifteen minutes in those averages. And that's, I think that's the key question there. Um, I'd be open tables item and so that we can have some more time to study and perhaps discuss amongst ourselves. Uh, and come up with more suggestions, uh, or we can just, you know, make that proposal now, that's up to council, what do you guys want? I'd honestly like to see a table come back, take a look at it, do some more comparisons. Cause I, I do remember those numbers, I also have, uh, the same, uh, presentation from our chief to run a few months ago. Um, but I, I am concerned on how we approach this, how we approach the residential areas and how we approach downtown, obviously if it's too loud, then we have an issue. If it's too low, then it's just gonna kill the atmosphere. Um, and if we, you know, shut down, uh, sound and festivities at people's residences and, you know, what's gonna happen to this town? We're all gonna be hanging out in Imperial.
Well, I, I think we do need to decide soon, Mr. Mayor, I mean, I, I know by tabling it, I don't know what more information we need, other than it's been provided. We do have decimal readings, we do have, uh, typical sound levels, we just need to decide if that doesn't work, right? We can always bring it back and modify things, but I think it's fair to the public and fair to everybody here who's been coming for a year, that we do decide on something just to move forward. Um, and provide some guidance, um, with the, with the caveat that we can revisit this in.
At any time.
Sixty days or thirty days or whatever it may be, um, but that we notify the public that, that these are, whatever. Yeah, it's a draft, actually, it's a draft, it's just a draft.
Mr. Mayor, may, may I make the, maybe the suggestion, I know you tossed out some maybe, um, adjusted D B, uh, decimal levels, is there maybe? Go down the line amongst any consensus here, perhaps with council, on how to maybe make that amendment and then we can move forward with a vote or, or some action?
I would be in favor, if you're asking me, uh, I would be in favor of just moving forward with the mayor's suggestion and give that some consideration and go from there. It looks like staff's already and, and our city attorneys already put a draft document that's pretty well thought out, so if we can make some adjustments that were considered.
Right, and I, I don't believe I need action, I just need, need a consensus direction, so. Cause we'll, we'll put it on for first reading and of course, can change it then too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I do feel it's important.
Yeah, my mind is numb right now.
Uh, would you care to, uh, read back the suggestions that we made?
Mr. Mayor, so. We're gonna, on table one, we're gonna break out, uh, weekends and increase, uh. Which, table one first, we're gonna break out weekends for residential zones and increase for the weekend up to seventy. And, uh, do we wanna stop at ten or go to eleven, midnight, what do you?
Midnight is what I'd like to see.
And then on table two.
So weekend is Friday and Saturday.
Friday and Saturday, right, yeah, you, we clarified that. The table two, we're making some serious adjustments here. Sunday through Thursday, seven A M. to eight P M. The max would be eighty-five. Eight P M. to twelve A M. go down to seventy-five and tw- and twelve A M. to seven A Ms.
That, that bullshit. Why don't you guys learn something?
Sixty-five. And then Friday and Saturday, I, I don't know if we got.
Uh, I'm sorry to interrupt, but you know what, I, that's not acceptable, how do we handle this situation going forward? I, I'm not gonna allow that to happen in chambers, we're all respectful, we take a beating, we take a beating from the public. We get called out, just the comments posted earlier by someone who's gonna be running, or ran against us in the past, accusing us of all sorts of stuff. The last thing that I'm gonna accept and tolerate is someone to come here and behave in that manner. We're open to all conversations, all suggestions, all comments, but I'm not gonna put up with that.
I agree, I don't accept that either, I, that's unacceptable, there is a decorum that we follow here, whether we agree or not, that is not acceptable.
Thank you, Councilor, now, uh, sorry to interrupt, can we shift real quick to answer that, how do we address that going forward? Cause I have no problem shutting the door on that gentleman, I need to know what is within my legal right as mayor of the city of Brawley to prevent that from happening any, going further.
Well, you can't disrupt a public, public meeting, that's for sure.
It's difficult.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I apologize to everyone for that and, uh, I should've reacted sooner, actually, I was just caught off guard a little bit, uh. There's a process that we're following here and this isn't final, but that is unacceptable, any way, shape or form, here. We represent the city, we represent the people that live in our city and that's basically spitting in all of their faces, so that's not acceptable. Thank you, sir, you make a chief course.
So. What I'm not clear about, Mr. Mayor, is, is what levels we're thinking about for the weekend in table two. Um, the same ones, eighty-five, seventy-five?
Yeah, I think that the, the shift was, uh, eighty-five, seventy-five at, till midnight, or were we looking at different hours at one A M.? Um, you know, it's, so one thing that's coming to mind right now is that the fact that. We're looking at nightclub with music, but yours are indoor, right? That's a reading in the building, not necessarily outside. Um, again, we don't wanna shut them down, but yeah, I think, uh, look, seven A M. to Friday, Saturday to seventeen, I would say seventeen and ten P M. Friday and Saturday, we go to those levels and then from eleven to one, we then can come down to eighty. Just a starting point, what you guys have to say with me?
If, and, Mr. Mayor, you're right in that, if it helps the public also to, uh, know that, um, these readings that, I'm just looking at all the averages that we're taking at. Spot eight oh five, at max, whatever you wanna call their, you know, kind of peak hours. Um, and then the subsequent readings at the plaza, um, we're averaging at the height, um, sixty-four D Bs, as low as forty-five D Bs. So, um, again, going to our scale up here, somewhere between a soft whisper and up to, you know, a conversation, you know, within. And, and I only bring that up again because this has been published publicly, we've discussed this in multiple sessions. Um, I, the only thing that would be helpful here, if we had it, would be, um, these averages again, to, to, give everyone a frame of reference, right, of what we're talking about. Cause now we're arguing over, you know, what eighty-five is and what eighty is and seventy is and I was afraid of that, cause I, I, I don't even.
Really important too to understand that these, we're talking about readings taken at the sidewalk, at, at the.
Not where it is at the plaza.
Not, not what someone's hearing.
That's four feet right from the front door.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah.
I, I think, yeah, just a few decimals, just to prevent those peaks or times when it might go too excessive, that's all I'm looking for right now. Obviously, it's not final, something we can revisit.
So I think I have pretty good direction, I'll do my best and then, uh, take a look.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
All right. And, and I would ask the public to be, you know, have some patience, I know it's been a year, but it's not the only item that the city deals with, you know, there are many things that we deal with. We operate a city that is, you know, twenty-seven thousand people strong, we have a staff of about a hundred and fifty people, there are topics that we deal with every single day, this is one of them. But, and it is an important one, so we've given it the attention that it, it requires, we've had staff out there, we've had, we've purchased apparatus to go out there and make the readings. So I do ask everybody to be patient and respectful and, uh, do appreciate the mayor stepping up and providing a little bit more guidance. And we're, we're near the finish line, we're, we're also open to changing things if they don't work, so I just ask everybody to please be patient.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, can I just make a couple of comments?
Yes, sir.
One, it, it occurs to me, or it has over the last year, it's, it's extremely difficult to measure sound and we have these, we have these gauges and stuff and it depends on where you are. Ms. Machado said something about, uh, at LAX, it's ninety-five decibels, a jet taking off, I would imagine maybe that's. Where is that taken from, on the tarmac or is that inside the, you know, inside the, the airport, you know, inside the buildings? Um, these, these measurements that are taken right outside spot eight oh five say one thing, the sound bounces down that street. I live, you know, probably a mile away from spot eight oh five, I hear some of their stuff late at night in my backyard. And, and you said, Mr. Mayor, that, uh, you know, to lower the volume too much would kill the vibe there. I don't think we've had the opportunity to know whether that would actually happen or not, you know, I've heard from some people who have been in attendance at some of their, their DJ events and stuff. That it's overwhelmingly loud, you can't have a conversation with, you know, your table mates. And it's, you know, it's not our job to dictate how someone runs their business until I guess it affects the, you know, the health and well-being of the people around them. So, I, I don't know, I think there's room for us to say, as we're saying everything else, is we're gonna try this and see if it works or if it doesn't. So, I, I don't know, I think there's room for us to say, as we're saying everything else, is we're gonna try this and see if it works, or if it doesn't. We could go, you know, err on the side of caution, and say this is what we're gonna try for a little while. And if it's, you know, if we, if we clamp down too much on it, and people complain the other way. Hey, we went to this event, it was dead because they didn't have enough volume, you know, maybe we can make a change to it, I just don't think that. If you knock it down to eighty or seventy-five, that people that go to these events are gonna feel like they got, you know, they didn't get the full experience.
Yeah, no, and, and, and again, I'm, I'm open for that, I was just being cautious, but trying to, you know, bring it down a little bit, but.
I think just because of the architecture downtown, all those flat, hard surfaces, the sound bounces anyway, and even if it's seventy-five decibels at midnight.
Yeah.
Or, or at ten PM, it's still gonna be plenty of volume.
And, and we didn't have those, those open spaces before, I mean, before, you know, the arson took them down, so, you know.
I think we can all agree, it's too loud.
Yeah.
I think that's the general consensus.
I think what, um, so the Friday, Saturday night, if, if, if you're already bringing it down five DBs, what you're, what we're proposing, I think, is eighty-five, eighty. And down to sixty-five after midnight, so, um, and that, I, I think I heard, um, compared to some of the others that were looked at. Sixty-five was the max or something, in, in many other cities, I don't know if, if that's what we're comparing to, but. Um, i- if, that, if that's the adjustment that we're comfortable with, if you want more, then just suggest it, so we can, sorta. Move forward.
You wanna go another five?
Yeah, you know, eighty, eighty, seventy-five on the, on the two, two higher ones, and then down, and then again. You guys, I'm just staring at the averages again here, it doesn't seem to me it would change a whole lot for spot eight oh five. Um, they'll have to bring it down a little bit, and here's the important part, I think both public and the plaza residents need to know. If, regardless of these studies, if they do something that's clearly louder than that, and we can catch that. Um, then they're obviously out of compliance with the ordinance, and, and there, you know, there could be consequences to that, so, um, like I said, I think we're. We're getting closer, we're, you know.
And I, I do remember some of the folks saying, like, some days, it's, 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 we can live with it, we can hear it, but it's not bad. Some day, some days, it's over the top exaggerated, right? And I think that we have readings that show that, right, we have the reading to show when it's seventy-five, we have reading to show up to eighty-nine or ninety, that's the reason I'm trying to. That I'm suggesting that we bring it down, but councilor Rehambi, if you want to, you know, another five, another, I mean, that's, we're open, what's, what we're here for. Go ahead, man.
So, may I make one additional comment, and then that'll be it for today. You're proposing decimal readings that are higher than the noise they're already making, you realize that, right? I mean, you do recognize that, so if, all these folks are already unhappy with what's happening, you're talking about making it even. And allowing it to even be loud.
Actually, no, that's not correct.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at a range right there.
At the, I'm sorry, can you?
So, I, I'm pretty sure that sixty to eighty is less than your proposed eighty-five to ninety.
We're using a presentation that was brought up by our police chief, Jimmy Duran, which shows some of the readings up to eighty-nine, ninety-two, I believe. And that's what we're trying to cap, and that's, and I recall those conversations very clearly with, with the folks in your building, says, sometimes it's excessively loud when we're doing those readings. They called in, that's, that's kinda what I'm basing it off of, I mean, again, we're open for suggestions here, to, you know, go down, out, down.
This is a summary of all those readings, is the average?
Correct, and that's, you're looking at the average.
And, Ms. Machado, I think that we're, we're already coming down, I think we're falling within line of that, um, based on how we're.
The forty-three to seventy-four?
Yeah. Sixty-five after ninety, yeah, up, up until eight o'clock, right, eight PM, I think is.
Yeah, we, we're happening just like, for example, they had one at ninety point three, one at a.
But the measurement, the measurement would be over at the facility, at Plaza.
At eight oh five.
At eight oh five, not.
No, I, yes, I read.
Right outside of the building, yeah.
It wouldn't be the, that reading there at Ciudad Plaza.
Wherever the noise is coming from.
Well, I'm assuming that when you have a reading of ninety-one inside spot eight oh five, that's the day that you're getting seventy-four at the Ciudad Plaza, so. I realize that it's going to be less at Ciudad than it would be at spot eight oh five, I, I under, I realize that.
Well, not necessarily, because those weren't at the same exact time, right, and so those were, you know, the readings were at different times, so, who knows?
I'm looking at the, the real detail that was probably of the exact times they were taken.
So, just so I understand, we're gonna come back one more time with a little fine numbers?
Two more times, first reading, second reading, yeah.
Okay, so when will you be posting the new numbers? So, for us to look at before the next city council meeting, all right?
February, whatever, uh, sixteenth. And, uh, if we could, chief, if, if you could help us out and just take a couple more readings, uh, throughout the weekends, and kind of get an idea of, feel for what we're proposing. And even, I, I mean, it's not enforceable yet, but if we were to ask them to work with us with those decibels, and get an idea of what that looks like. I mean, we, we gotta get this right, and, and obviously, it's, it's a document that we can move, play with. But I, I'd rather get it right now than, you know, have to come back in thirty, four months, six months, another year, fourteen months, right, man? Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Parte.
Terry Parte? Um, I just wanted to do a quick suggestion, maybe we can, um, I know in other urbanized area, in more urban areas, they have, you know. Sprawling downtown, sprawling cities, and they've had similar issues with, you know, excessive noise levels, so a lot of clubs, I know. Especially in bigger cities, have turned into, um, more silent, silent nightclubs, so they have, you know, headphones over. I, I know it's, it's a far-fetched solution, but I, it's, it's maybe, it's maybe something to consider at some nights where we. We can do something of the sort, I know it's, it's very far-fetched, but it's, it can help.
I've heard, I've heard of it, and I've seen it myself, thank, thank you, Mr. Parte. All right, uh, chief, thank you, sir.
Yeah, just to make sure that I understand what you want done, uh, you want us to go and redo some, some readings on, on the weekends? Uh, and maybe compare them to the new readings?
The suggestions that we're making.
The suggestions, and kinda give you a, an overview of that, uh, maybe, uh, Friday, especially Friday and Saturday?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I think it'd be very helpful, so we can get down to this, we can go lower if we need to, or we can go.
And, and unfortunately, we don't have two devices, cause I think it would be appropriate to measure at the same time, both. I don't know if we were, I mean, eventually, once this is implemented, we're probably gonna need another device, maybe we can, uh, procure another device. And do that at the same time, though, we can show.
Yeah, what the measure, what it's reading.
Don't make them spend more money.
That's why I was saying, like, I, unless you're doing it simultaneously.
Yes, and, and that's why I suggest that we do this time to make sure, uh, that, you know, we provide better readings for our citizens.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, one last clarification, and I think, uh, Mayor, um, Castro, Castro, sorry. And councilman Rehber, there, there, but you wanted in the administrative fine, uh, a first warning, correct?
Uh, well, I think I wanted a separate one for residential.
Yeah, residential. For residential, for warning, okay.
Five hundred dollars for a house, I, I, I do wanna say, you know, um, I'm not a business owner, but, you know, I can imagine a. Government right imposing, but at the same time, um, we're here because it's impacting quality of life. You know, it took a year for these residents, uh, to come, and, uh, you know, it says, it recognizes in this, uh. Ordinance that our noise ordinance was outdated, you know, a year ago, I don't think that was, there was an appetite to even revisit or change it, but I think. I know we're framing it economic, and we're framing it as, you know, downtown, but there's a quality of life issue, you know, they didn't come here because. It just happened to be loud, and it was a small inconvenience, I don't think anyone's coming here week after week, or it's minor inconvenience. I think it's impacting their quality of life, and so I think it's something we need to take seriously, like I said, whether it's, as councilmember Habby said, erring on the side of caution. Um, but, you know, we recognize, Ms. Goss, you came here week after week, you know, you came here, it's, that's not, that didn't go unnoticed by any of us. And so, um, I'm not sure even what we're, what the suggestions were, but, uh. I think, like I said, framing it in that manner, and, uh, so, I'm, I'm with councilman Habby on, but it's erring on the side of caution, but.
I mean, we opened it up for suggestions, and I was the only one, pure tired, felt like I was all alone out here, so, you know, you know, that's why we're open. Item is still open for discussion, I mean, uh, that's what I would say, you know? I was like, I felt like I was doing something wrong for a minute, so it's, we open for suggestions, I think our city attorney has. Uh, you know, the suggestions is gonna run with that, come back for a first reading, and, and honestly, we can't be here all night, we discussed this, brought this up.
And, yeah.
Unless you got any further suggestions.
No, but, but even the issues, we're adults, we're, we're in the power, position of power, if someone comes in and says a mean thing to us. I don't know, I don't see it, I'm not trying to shut doors on people, worse things are said about us on social media, we're not shutting them down, so if someone comes here. Invades their frustration.
When, when.
When you have the public, when you have the public, yeah, when, when. Public here, I think they need to be respectful, you know what I mean?
More embarrassing for them than it is for us.
It, it is, it is, but, and, 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 uh, councilman Rehber, when you become mayor, you may allow anybody to come spit on your face here.
I think I have.
I'm not gonna, I'm saying, when you become, I, I am not gonna allow that, I am not gonna allow that, I, I don't allow it out there, I'm not gonna allow it in here. I think there's a certain decorum that we must follow, if we have to behave, if I can't give him what he dishes out at me, like I would on the street, and he's not gonna give it to me here. That's what I'm saying, that was so disrespectful.
Saying it wasn't disrespectful, but we're, it's freedom of speech, it's a public forum, we're positions of power.
All amendments have a limit, oh, first amendment, second one, they all have, including freedom of speech has a limit.
And it says in public comment, no personal attacks, and that's, that was a personal attack against all of us.
Sorry, not to, thank you too much, I just got, that, you just really got, just, it's not, I don't think it's, it's not acceptable.
Uh, well, I mean, I think the point is, everybody needs to be professional and courteous and respectful, that's it, yeah.
Absolutely, okay, um, sir, any other, anything else, do we need anything else, all right, let's move on to the next item. Item five D, discussion of potential action to award the contract Top Builders Construction, Inc. for project. Number twenty twenty-four dash zero six, senior citizen, citizen, senior center garden ADA project. And allow the city manager, manager to execute all documents related to the project, presented by Thomas Garcia, assistant to the city manager.
Again, good evening, uh, mayor and, uh, council members, members of the public. A little less controversial item here before us.
We'll, we'll be the judge of that. Right, so. Right, right, yeah.
Some long-winded, uh, improvements, uh, to our senior center, uh, garden, um, has been worked, been, uh, in, in the works with our, uh. Parks and Recs manager, Rachel Franseca, and, uh, city manager, uh, Tyler Salcedo. So, uh, we went out to the bid process, um, this is a project to do some upgrades, uh, well-dated at the senior center garden. Including the, uh, uh, some, putting in a cement, uh, walk path, um, the. ADA compliant ramp on the back door of the facility, and then raising the, uh, planter boxes to have easier access. Um, so not only will it put us in, in better compliance with ADA and civil liability, but most importantly, it'll make it safer. More enjoyable, uh, facility for those that use it. Um, so the, uh, bid process, uh, was guided by our consultant Holt Group, um, the lowest bid there, as you see in the, uh. Package, uh, the Top Builders Construction, um, and so we're, uh, recommending, uh, awarding top builders the, uh, contract for this project.
All right, any, it's just an action item, right?
Yes.
Start getting a hold of this, all right?
I'll make a motion to approve the item, Mr. Mayor, if there's no further questions or comments.
All right, we have motion in a second, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries five zero, all right, and we had moved items five E and five F to the beginning, let's go ahead and jump over to item five G. Discussion of potential action to approve professional services agreement amendment, with First Carbon Solutions International, Inc. For additional revisions of the project description of Rancho Los Lagos specific plan, project for a not to. Exceed amount of sixty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement, presented by Thomas Garcia, assistant to the city manager.
Yes, this is a reference to the Rancho Los Lagos, uh, development project, um, large annexation for the, uh, city, probably the. Definitely the largest annexation the city's seen in, in county, uh, I know this project's been before you numerous times, you're all very familiar. And so, this is, uh, for our consultant, um, First Carbon Solutions, um, working on helping with the specific plan. Working for the city in high capacity, um, they did do the first draft, but it's, you know, with these long-term projects and. Different, uh, studies that come in, that, those reports have to be amended. And that we're moving to, uh, later this year, um, get those reports finalized. This contract is also paid out from, the developer pays this fees in advance payment decision.
That was my only question. All right?
I'll answer any question.
Any question from council?
Here, I'll make a motion to approve the item.
Motion, we have a second? Motion, we have a motion in a second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, non-motion carries five here. Order here, all right, I'm moving on to item five H, discussion of potential action to approve amendment number one to the agreement with N V five. To provide professional engineering services as needed, presented by Ramadilla, Director of Public Works, operations and maintenance.
Thank you, Mayor Castro, city council, city staff, and general public. Now, this, uh, item is, uh, on the agenda for approval, the city of Brawley has solicited contractors for the. SP one street improvements projects, along with the road maintenance and rehabilitation program. Streets to be improved are Second Street from K Street to Mayland Street, Eighth Street from Rio Vista Avenue to Las Flores Drive. Third Street from A Street to River Drive, C Street from North First Street to North Imperial Avenue. Wildcat Drive from eighty, Highway eighty-six to Western Avenue, Jennifer Street and Mesquite Avenue. Not the whole street, these are just repair areas only, and E Street median island at Fifth Street. Uh, the projects will consist of asphalt overlay, utility covers, uh, adjusted and striping. City received three bids, the bid summaries included in your agenda staff report, city engineer staff has reviewed the bids and recommends Elsie Paving and Ceiling Incorporated. Located in Escondido, California, for the amount of one million, one hundred and seventy-seven, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. Along with a fifty percent contingency and the amount of one hundred and seventy-six, six ninety-three, fifty-one, for the total project funding amount. Of one million, three hundred and fifty-four, six hundred and fifty thousand and twenty-six cents. And authorize the city manager to execute all documents concerning this project. The local bid preference of five to seven percent factor does not change or alter the bid results. Any question? They were, I had in prioritization of in need of repair. By city staff.
Mr. Ramadina. Ramadina.
Actually, we'll be forthcoming with LPP projects probably next council.
Is visually, these, I guess, spread out around town, or, I'm trying to?
They are spread around town.
I think it's been our experience each phase around, um, that, i- i- am I correct that, um, adding to that, that the city looks out ahead? Even beyond the scope of these rounds of funding, you're looking at and really prioritizing.
We've already submitted application for other funding sources on other streets that are in need of repair.
And then, I believe, part of the other decision, ob- obviously, is the size and the specification of the street might be open to other types of funding that we can match up with, so hence. Um, it could speed up other streets versus, or even, in some cases, delay, because we're looking for additional funding.
Exactly, so we, we are actually out seeking alternative funding, which is federal and state funding, as opposed to using our local streets.
Thank you, I just wanted to.
All right, any other comments, questions? All right, I entertain a motion. Item five eight.
Make a motion to approve the item.
A second, I'll say. Motion in a second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. All right, uh, item.
Uh, mayor, I'm sorry, could I just make one comment?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I think it's important for the public to, uh, really comprehend that all the. Infrastructure improvements that Public Works has put before council in the last few months here. And continuing that, uh, we are really working on improving infrastructure throughout the city. And, uh, trying to find the appropriate funding for it, I, I think it's, needs to be pointed out, the staff is doing a hell of a job.
Appreciate it from, uh, Ram and, and the rest of the Public Works team, for trying to get all these much. The list of, of needed repairs is a lot longer than what we have funding for, but it, we're, we're making great, great strides. Can I, can I ask a question about that, Senator? Would you, how would you compare that, the, the work that's been done, or, uh, the preparations that are being done, um, compared to five years ago?
Uh, I don't think I was here five years ago, uh, but, uh.
Or any time in, in recent.
Um, but, I, I, in my opinion, it's, we're moving much quicker, and we have, and we have a long-range plan that we're building. So, so we don't let. In, in future meetings, Ram is gonna present for you, uh, long-range plans that will save us money on maintenance, so we don't wait till they're. In such disrepair that we have to pay. And that's not just Ram's department. It's, it's all the departments are, are looking into the future more, besides long term planning. In my opinion, I believe we are much more responsive and quick, quicker to, to get things done as, as humanly possible in, in a government situation in the state of California.
Yeah, no, I just, the point was, it takes time to kind of redirect, to, to turn the ship. And I think that you're right, staff and you are doing phenomenal job of doing things differently than they were done before. And we'll see those results.
Oh, and I just, uh, uh, got an update. As an example. We budgeted for, uh, advertising for projects. We've already exceeded the budget this year. Bad news is we're over budget. Good news is, hey, we're doing some work.
Any other questions? Uh, no, alright. Sorry, we already voted on that item. Alright, no worries, no worries. Uh, five, uh, this is five to five, aye. Discussion and potential action to authorize amendment number one to the agreement with. Uh, NV five to provide professional engineering services as needed, presented by Ramadina, Director of Public Works, operations, operations and maintenance.
Thank you, Mayor Castro, city council, city staff, and general public. Yeah, this action item is to approve the amendment to continue engineering services with NV five to provide and support engineering services to complete the year. Up to March twenty-one, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of thirteen thousand, six hundred. The city will review and prepare its options for council's consideration to continue engineering consulting services beyond March twenty-one, twenty twenty-four. Engineering staff have reviewed the workload and cost and recommends the approval of the amendment to NV five. And this is all due in part with the additional work that we're doing here at the city of Raleigh. So it is recommended.
Any questions for the council?
Not a question, but just a comment.
Yes, sir.
I, I did recently, and I think you're aware of it, um, you had a comment from a person who's working to develop some property here. In the city of Raleigh, and they were, they were frustrated with staff and NV five because of the red lines throughout their. Submissions, and so they've had multiple submissions. I think that it'd be, uh, we can tighten that up a little bit, just so city staff can take a further look before it goes out to NV five.
Final question? Motion a second, all is in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Is opposed? Last item, discussion and potential. Item five J, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, item five J, discussion and potential action to approve the funding for the creation of a code enforcement officer and code enforcement division. Presented by Tyler Salsito, city manager.
Uh, thank you, mayor. Um, as you recall, at the last council meeting, uh, council member Nava highlighted the, uh, the growing need. For dedicated efforts in maintaining and enforcing the city's codes and ordinances. And he had proposed the creation of a, a code enforcement officer position, actually to bring one back. This, this would allow the city to be more proactive, not reactive to code enforcement, helping ensuring compliance with, uh, with the current local regulations. And in addition, the, the position would, you know, fosters a safer and cleaner Raleigh and strengthens the city's ability to improve the community standards and quality of life. In the, uh, financial impact to, uh, for this year through June thirtieth, it's estimated between thirty-six. Thousand, call it thirty-seven thousand to forty-five, depending on the vehicle. Fuel and those type of things, so there's a range there. Um, that would come directly out of, uh, general fund reserves. To fund this position.
With respect to the position, um, Tyler, I'm sorry.
No, no, go right ahead.
With respect to that position, um, Tyler, it would be placed under the police department?
That is staff recommendation, yes.
Because it used to be under building before, but that would be, since they would be responsible for issuing citations.
Citations and, and since we are, uh, thinking about that, in addition, animal control. Same type of citation. We're trying to do it under one house, but the code enforcement will be its own division and its own defense center. So it won't be mixed budget wise into the, but the enforcement will be out of the police house.
With respect to the position, would they need to have some sort of, um, uh, would they carry a badge? Would they be sworn officer?
They, they won't be an officer, but chief, they, they have PC, what is it, PC? Eight thirty-two. Yeah, we'll be trained, ask for PC eight thirty-two. That's the California penal code that allows, uh, individuals to make citations. Uh, yes, actually, we had a very, uh, good discussion today. We had, uh, our deputy fire chief, uh, Oscar Scalante and several of my staff today. Uh, we were actually looking at all those aspects, because we wanted to take the time to make sure that the duties also, uh, would take care of the needs of the other department. We're creating this individual, it will be under our roof, but yet we wanted to, uh, help everybody else in building, fire. And, and of course, some of the issues that we've been, uh, dealing with, uh, somebody can be lost, business and stuff like that. Uh, our suggestion is, yes, uniform, badge. Our experience has, uh, shown that when you have an individual. Present itself with a full uniform and a badge representing the city and the police department, uh, it will definitely carry more weight. Uh, the way we're gonna uniform this individual is gonna be double patch, because it's technically a separate budget for, under the city, but yet under the, uh, direction of the police department. So it'll be the city, uh,'s patch on their right, uh, right side and the police patch on the left. With a rocker assess code enforcement, and of course, they will carry a badge in a modified rough duty uniform. Uh, for, for patrol purpose, we're gonna call it patrol code enforcement patrol, and they will definitely have a formal uniform that will match, but they will have the patches that I just described. Uh, as well as the duties, we also talked about the duties today, and we, that's Oscar here, yeah, he can attest to that. Uh, it was very productive. We went through the whole job description and we crossed and fixed, and I think it's gonna be good. In the budget also including a vehicle, a separate vehicle.
Uh, question, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, so general funds, so this will be from February to June of this year?
That's the estimate, and then of course, we'll present the whole budget for during the budget process.
So this position, that just, I guess, it's pretty ongoing, it's a continuous, and so it'll be established. Or in hiring, are we going through the same police officer, I guess, or employee?
Yes, it's gonna be a modified, it's the, the same, uh, process we use for our professional staff. So it'll be a modified background, uh, you know, as long as they meet certain requirements, that's what we intend to do, since they're gonna be under the roof of the police department. A- a- and again, I just wanted to make one note too, because our, 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 our main focus is to, is compliance, you know, through warnings. That's why I like the fact that earlier you mentioned, hey, we gotta give a warning, because that's what it's all about. Uh, in, 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 when I said about the uniform, it carried more weight, it's because of that. A lot of times people hear the warning more, uh, if you have a uniform. I just wanted to clarify that.
Um, quick question, how the reporting process, I don't mind taking complaints and then forwarding them to our city manager. Um, is there gonna be a process for complaints?
Or they can call directly to, yeah, there's gonna be a code enforcement phone number for those direct.
No, no, I'm trying to help you out.
My apologies, you mean for the public. Yes, we'll have a dedicated reporting, uh, hotline type.
Yes, if I may, it'll be very similar to the way we're doing our graffiti, which is working very well. Uh, some of the complaints will come to their front counter, some will come through a dispatcher, and some will actually go straight to the graffiti officer. So we're gonna do something like that to make sure we catch everybody's concerns. Yeah, no, and of course.
We'll advertise that.
You know, we, we wanna, we go through you, right, here, the CEO, and, uh, with trying to take some off your plate, I shouldn't be bothering with, like, hey, there's an RE that's been parked there for two weeks. I try not to do that. Okay, alright, uh, so. We already, uh.
That was your car, then.
Yeah, that was the problem.
He walked down and told me about it.
No, uh, so I'm sorry, I lost where we, we already voted on this item, right? I am so sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Alright, a second? Alright, all is in favor? Opposed, none, I don't care, it's five. Alright, uh, informational reports. There is an attachment in, uh, the agenda for those who would like to view it. And, uh, let's move on to city council member reports. We'll start with, uh, council member rebel.
Yeah, um, just one thing, uh, I just got back from, uh, being at, uh, ten, the local government twenty-third initiative. Kind of conference, anything, but attracted a lot of, uh, public sector officials, not, not elected, but city managers, librarians, planners, engineers. Uh, across the spectrum, they just saw a few years ago, that just, local government doesn't seem to be able to. Uh, and they wanted to break the silence. So often, I think, and I, I looked at maybe, I was, we go to our conferences at the city council. I'm sure city manager, your city manager, very often you get everyone kind of in the same room, like they said, across that spectrum, and really dive into what's going on. And so the bottom was public trust in, uh, local government was at an all time low. And I think we, we just have to look at brands and rage and sometimes see how people, a big chunk of people feel about us despite the work being done. Also morale, you know, like I said, employees, mayor, or councilor, you mentioned a few meetings ago about, you know, defending our staff because of the attack. Same thing, you know, public employees, you know, busts and busts, and yet attacked the trust, and so what is going on? They got together, started working on these initiatives, and, uh, really, uh, there's three things that have to kick out from it. One was communications, how can local governments improve communications, not just to the public, but the work being done, but into the. Growing a resilient workforce, you know, we see the issues on recruitment, retention, hiring, how do we not just address them, but also grow and expand? And also promising pathways where there's so many in our community that, uh, have, may have barriers. No, but, I mean, Mayor, uh, Castro, you know, impacted by justice system or even on disability. How do we kill two birds with one stone by giving those, you know, an opportunity while also filling in and hiring vacancies? That local governments are having across borders. Really, you know, really a cool thing, I think, a lot of initiatives, I won't put it on you, Tyler, I know you got a lot going on, but. I think locally in the valley, um, there's a space for something like this, where we're all connected, you know, we're connected, Calixco, we're connected, Calipat, we're connected. And so, um, I think, uh, I'm gonna try to get some movement on this, I think it could benefit all of us, but. Uh, I just wanted to share that, I said, what we're going through is across the nation. There's officials from Florida to Illinois, Texas, Oregon, and it was like, we're all telling the same story. We're all going with the same things, or what is going on? And so, you know, it's, it's common, you know, and so, um, but. It's a path forward, and, uh, I'll be sure with the mayor, uh, some things I think we can implement and, uh, help our city and, uh, community. But, uh, that's it. I, uh, I hope everyone's been having, um, good starts to the year, and, uh, this is my report.
You'll be happy to hear some of the items that I'll report. Uh, council member.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna defer my report, other, other than I do want to say, uh. Last week, uh, Marjorie Mello, our former librarian and library director, passed away in, in her home in Oklahoma. Found that out yesterday, so I just wanted to inform the council of that and the public, and then offer condolences to her family and her friends.
Uh, council member now, I was gonna call you mayor.
Well, I'll keep it brief, but I do want to wish my brother Johnny a happy fiftieth birthday. And I, and I know he's not watching, but, you know, yes, today is his fiftieth. Today's his fiftieth birthday, so happy birthday, Johnny. We also attended the, uh, league, uh, division dinner, and so that was a meeting that we all attended, or several of us did, and, uh, that was good. Get some information there. Also had a conversation with, uh, some, um, of the council members from the city of Calipatria recently. With respect to their water and wastewater services issues, and they met with city staff and myself and our mayor. And, uh, we, we had our initial discussion, at least for maybe some things that they're planning in the future. And, uh, also attended the IBDC dinner, and that was, um, you know, good information. Uh, Cosmo, um, uh, presented a very good, uh, program. I thought the, was, uh, it was on point. You know, I, I have a real estate background and, like, a lot of what he was saying made a lot of sense, and so, and it impacts our community and communities throughout the, the country. So very good information, also attended ICTC, so I, I won't get too far into the conversation here, but I do want to thank city staff and everybody else. For doing, uh, such a hard, hard, uh, for doing the hard work out there and, and, uh, making the improvements to our community. It's been good. Now, we've got big projects coming for Main Street, and, uh, I'm sure we'll hear some feedback from the public. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Prochette Warren?
Uh, yes, just a couple of quick items. Um, I think I already mentioned one, uh, was asked, um, actually on the heels of doing a presentation. Uh, for, uh, the Nava Capital Group and, uh, um, his organization.
I heard it was pretty good.
I was then asked to come do, uh, a similar presentation for the chamber. Um, and, and just members of the public that wanted to show up. So again, that, that, that was very enjoyable, went well. Um, and then the second thing, I won't belabor all the projects that, uh, we are trying to continue to move along, um, in the background, one of them being. Um, I, I think, uh, affecting the Raleigh airport potentially in a positive way, and I think there's some other movement there, uh, with some of our other tenants. So, uh, I'll just keep my comments at that, Mr. Mayor, and it back to you.
Alright, uh, and I, first off, we apologize for not coming in last minute, and thank you, uh, Mayor Prochette Warren for, for bailing me out, helped me out at the last minute. So, um, you know, I try to be, uh, just, uh, considerate of others. And, uh, for about three months, I think I've been dealing with either a cold, probably COVID or flu, and. I, I almost broke an ankle a week and a half ago, so I was limping around with a walking stick. Uh, and so it's been like a whole lot of that, and today, uh, the rain got me again, and that's why I hurt a little bit, but we're good. Uh, it's been busy, though. We haven't stopped, a lot of different meetings, uh, last week I met with the folks through career expansion. Uh, and they, they work with the Department of Rehabilitation, and, uh, they, they take folks and. I think that sometimes, and this is one of the misconceptions, was that folks think that when they say Department of Rehabilitation, they think it's a former inmate. And not necessarily, it's any folks with, with any handicap, any sort of, uh, disability, uh, can qualify for specific grants. And job training, uh, so in the same meeting, we brought in GapCon and, uh, Mr. Salsito, you remember the, the other group, uh? Perrin and. Yeah, so, I, I, I forget, it was a, it was a complicated name, but what they, what they were focusing, GapCon is focusing on a grant, a regional grant that would. That's, uh, focused on economic development, uh, and so a lot of the discussions that we had. Included training for positions, not just lithium, but construction sites. And including the city, and suggestions were made, perhaps, and I know our city manager's looking into all this, was how can some of these grants provide funding? For positions with the city, such as a, uh, so modified apprenticeship or whatnot. I, really, that's what I understood from all the discussions we had. We sat there for about two hours, a lot of items were discussed, but that's what I came with, what I felt was most important, that would help alleviate some of the issues. As you know, in construction sites, you can't bring somebody in to be a journeyman level electrician. It takes five years, five years of school. It takes five years of on the job training, a minimum of eight thousand hours, and I do, I dare say that most of us aren't ready, even after eight thousand hours to be that, at that level. Uh, so this would be very helpful, and I think that it would, it would solve a lot of our problems, and I hope that we can bring that to fruition. It would help, certainly help our city, our staff, and, and most importantly, our constituents. I went, visited, uh, we met with SDSU Dean, uh, Dean Nunez, and, uh, obviously, we referred, then referred her over to our city manager, Tyler Salsito. And that's how the MOU came about. We also attended the meet in IBDC, uh, pretty good presentation. I was kind of blown away, and I'm glad you understood it. Uh, council member Nava, because, yeah, I was, I was, uh, out of my league on that one. I, I, I had, I understand. How beneficial it can be, I just didn't understand exactly how that's broken down and how we make it happen, so I'm glad you're on, on the team, and we can rely on your expertise. Um, also, uh, legal cities, uh, and Prairie Valley Division Dinner. And, um, just so you guys know, this meeting, uh, includes all the folks from Alcentro, Calixco, and Calipat. And, uh, we have an ongoing rivalry with Alcentro, and I know that, uh, Councilman Nava, when he was mayor, he always threw a few jabs at them, and they would kind of fight back, right? Uh, and I threw.
Throwing jabs, they were attacking me. I was under attack.
Yeah, that's right.
I was under attack, right?
And so.
Trying to be nice.
I went up this time, I went up first, and I make sure we opened it right. It's like when you're bragging about your city, right? And I had to make sure I got some trash talking in there, and then the, the one thing that, uh, that Mr. Apo, I know that he put on Sylvia Marugina at the end. So let her finish off the fight. She walked off by, you know, talking a little trash, and it's alright. Yeah, she was like, yeah, she let me have it, and then, you know, she offered to buy me a beer afterwards to make me feel better, but I was like, I'm driving, I can't drink, so. Anyways, so it was, that's a lot of fun. I was asked last minute by Mr. Jason Jackson to be the keynote speaker for the Blue Angel Dinner. And, uh, just so you guys know, I don't, I've done a lot of public speaking, but never in that format, and so he asked to do a presentation on your twenty-twenty-one walk. I had about two hours to put it together. And so he asked to do a presentation on your twenty-twenty-one walk, I had about two hours to put it together, I mean, I think I just made fun of myself most of the time and I realized that. It was a very successful presentation because of that, so going forward, I'm going to use it a lot more, so it was pretty good, the Blue Angels, a lot of folks. I know that uh Mister Duggan, Mister Duggan's Construction went up to speak afterwards, uh, and was able to get, you know, a little bit of movement and and interest in the subject that we were discussing. Including the release of a a new documentary called America Invaded where they highlight the work that we did walking the length of the border um in twenty-twenty-one. Again, that does not express my point of view, take it for what it is. Um, my point of view was stated clearly on the issue that I was that I was bringing awareness to. Um, and one other item, I know that uh uh Councilmember Nava has discussed the opportunity for us to make some changes on Main Street with this, uh, now that we're going to tear up the street. I was hoping that we could um maybe um have, uh, what's Mister Medina, is he there, he's already gone?
No, he's there.
Oh, there he is, I'm sorry.
Taking notes.
You know, I'm like really, I'm new to this glass thing, these glasses thing, twenty over ten till I was like forty-two. And so now I'm struggling to see you from there and I'm struggling to see here, just struggling to see, struggling to hear, see, walk, just getting old. Um, so if you could, I would like to see perhaps in, uh, you know, Councilmember Nava brought this up and I know that I brought it up in the past and uh folks in the community, especially folks on downtown uh. Uh, Business District have been discussing that, the possibility of making it a friendlier for customers and so. I guess now is the right time to have discussion, not as we start awarding contracts and bids and, um, you know, so I I would ask if we could have something, even if meeting up with Councilmember Nava. Uh, or myself or any other council members or city manager and maybe get it up to us for the next meeting if possible, if it, if time allows for it, but but as soon as possible. All right, and uh last thing, I just want to say my son, uh, my son turned eighteen yesterday.
Happy birthday to him.
Thank you, all right, my little boy and uh. He's my only son, right, I have I have four daughters, but a son and a daughter are both entirely different and uh, you know, I I wasn't always on a good path. I think when I came out of the Marine Corps, I was kind of all over the place and trying to figure out life and and a little messed up from what I, what I, my service. But when he came into my life, I realized very quickly that I I had to be a man and be a good example for him and uh. I think he took all that and he's much more than I could ever be at that age, he's an excellent, uh, excellent young man and I know that we're discussing some of the issues that being a public service. Uh, how this bleeds over to the family, to your children and, you know, even even him as being the the, you know, council member's son, what he's had to deal with. Uh, and you know, he's just been, you know, he's taking it like a champ, he's lost some friends or whatnot, but he's a, he's a good kid, you know, smart, you know, honorable, he's an athlete, he's a wrestler. Good to his mother, he's good to his sisters, he's good to me, um, you know, when I was walking around with the cane, he was trying to carry me, he actually carried me up the stairs, he like picked me up. And I weigh two hundred pounds again, I'm a small guy, but two hundred pounds is not that, he actually picked me up, put me up the stairs because he wasn't, he didn't want me to hurt myself anymore, so. Anyways, uh, enough on that, but yeah, again, happy birthday, son, I love you and I wish you nothing but the best life has to offer. Um, and that concludes my comments, I was to defer it to the mayor, but I am the mayor, so, all right, so I guess now we move on to our city attorney report?
Yes, Mister Mayor, um, just on item A for closed session, we still haven't had uh any word from the court on our motion for attorney's fees. So we won't have to deal with that in closed session, but the other things we do have to speak about.
All right, thank you, sir, and we'll now move on to, uh, you guys want to take a five-minute break or just move right into closed?
Go right into.
Yeah, let's go into right.
This won't take very long.
All right, should let's move in.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all, have a good night.
Take care.